For the thirteenth of February. Of the Barrington Town Select Board. Right here, a motion to go into non-public session.
Or specifically.
On motion. Take it. All in favor?
Uh, okay.
I will then repair to the other room. We will rejoin after we're finished on meeting.
Perfect.
Reconvene our meeting. We just come out of a public session. Or a non-public session for um legal means uh. So we will resume. So we will resume a select board meeting in thirteen September.
Take a motion to.
Seal the minutes.
Seal it's amazing, seal the minutes for six months.
Second. There's a second, Mr. Scotia seconds, all those in favor, opposed, very good. Yeah, just to keep up with our. Keep up with our agenda, our usual role, role call attendance.
And I.
Gibson here.
Scotia. They're clearly here.
And that's right, okay, can I ask you all to join me and plus the leading to the prize?
I'm glad you're here, Jesus, to be heard, I believe, in this state of America. You know, to make love to who wishes to stand as one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal, and just as for all.
Thank you. All have a chance to look at the agenda, been published, any comment or questions?
And then.
Motion to approve the the agenda, second discussion, Mr. Gibson, all in favor, opposed.
Public comment, as usual, public comment is limited to. Citizens of the town unless a good wise. Will request it and approve, each speaker has provided a single opportunity to comment, limited to three minutes. Speakers should not expect a response to their comments or questions since the select board may not have discussed or taken a position on the matter. Public comment is not a two-way dialogue between speakers, select board, and or the town administrator. Are there any public comments, there, there are some especially, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you very much, I want to apologize to the voters for my actions during the last deliberative session. I had, I had to leave for an appointment that I had been looking, trying to have made for over a year, and I just could not afford to miss it. So please accept my apologies for having to leave, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, any other comments from anyone present, Mr. Mr. Grant.
Ken Grant, three seventy-two Parker Mountain Road.
Mr. Grant, if I'll step over here, we'll get you on the camera, if you don't mind. Just for the folks at home, thank you.
Ken Grant, three seventy-two Parker Mountain Road, and I am making comments on the budget. This, our country is thirty-two trillion dollars in debt, and that's what happens when elections are stolen. And the country is run by corrupt, corrupt people masquerading as president. The budgets that we have here have indicated to me that your willingness to join, join in with that, that mess of debt. And I, I move that this budget should not be passed, it should be the default budget. People should carefully look at the items that are in the guide and be, be very critical of the way that money is being spent. Because of what's happening in this country. The direct result of that is voters being. They've been left to financial manage their matters from costs that are being driven up for use of our utilities. Renewal at that, but the other thing that you should take a careful look at is especially Article twenty. Article twenty is just a disguise for the global warming church, government. Maybe that the church and state are supposed to be separate, and this certainly is not separate. This, this is an advisory committee that the only thing they want to do is restrict your use of utilities. They want you to be penalized, use of emitting greenhouse gases. This is an article that should not stand, if they want to study. Anything to do like that, they can raise their own money for it, the taxpayers should not vote for this article, thank you.
Any other public comments, anyone present?
You're participating virtually, yeah, press star six or raise your hand, wait to be recognized by the chair. I don't see anything virtually, Mr. Chair.
Either.
How long can I stay?
Since there appears to be no further comments here or online, we'll close this public comment session. There will be another public comment opportunity towards the end of the agenda, public hearing. I'm invited, Michael Carrington, our representative from Durham, Stratford, and.
We're venting.
Wherever we are along that stretch.
They do all connect at one point.
So.
Well, first of all, thank you for having me, I appreciate it, I'll just give you a little bit of background about myself. I've lived in Stratford for thirty-four years with my wife, bought land there, built a house back then, and my, both my daughters went up through the schools now. And they're both very successful ones that just started their own company, and the other one is a doctor at Mass General. I'm a nuclear engineer, I worked at Seabrook and worked for the Navy before that for a lot of years. I was current engineering manager at Seabrook for quite some time, and after leaving there, I became, kind of a strange course of events. I became a public utilities commissioner, and I spent over ten years at the commission in multiple roles. And retired from there a few years back, and in between there, I had been elected state representative twice. And because I had resigned when I was made commissioner, because you can't hold both positions, so I decided to run again. I'm serving on science and tech, which is obviously kind of matches with my background, and that's just a little bit about myself. So this will be my sixth term altogether, so just a little bit about what's going on, because this is kind of a unique year. If you're probably aware, the house is, is almost evenly divided right now, I think the latest count is, is two hundred and one Republicans. Hundred ninety-six Democrats, there's one person that resigned his seat in Nashua because he was arrested. Another person who has not been sworn in, and then there's a special election going to be held the next, I guess the next week or so in town. In Rochester where it was a dead tie, they did a recount, they recounted, and it still came out dead tie. So I guess that says that we can count well. I just wanted to let people know that because of this is kind of an unusual situation, you're going to see something that almost. You, you could go almost go through a whole session without seeing this happening in the past, and on tomorrow, we have a house session. And I know there's at least eight or ten of these on there where there's no recommendation from the committee because the vote was tied. Now, on science and tech, we've had, and then we had a number of bills, I think four or something out of our committee, where it was a ten to ten vote. So that comes out with no recommendation, that's, before this session, that would happen maybe once or twice a year. We're going to have it happen ten times tomorrow, so it is, it is a little different because of that. And what's going to happen on the House floor is going to be who shows up. Because any given day that there's a house session, there's usually somewhere around, you know, fifteen to twenty-five representatives that don't show up for whatever reason. They're on vacation, they're sick, they're at a darkness point, or whatever. Of course, this year, we both Democrats and Republican leaderships are really pushing to try to get everybody there. Because, you know, it's going to really be come down to a lot of these, you know, a signal vote or two, making a difference whether something gets out of the house or not. And the Senate is fourteen to ten Republican, so there was bills over there would probably go through, and of course, the government's Republican as well. So that's just a little bit of the way of background, what's going on now, so this is the budget year. So I've got a list of bills that you're interested in, and I do intend to go over those, just be advised on the budget process. There's, it's a very complicated, long process, because first they're going to sit down and figure out how much money you think we're going to get. That's from Ways and Means Committee, and the person who had been in charge is either the ranking member or the chairman for that. For the last twenty-five years, something like that, didn't run for reelection, so his expertise is going to be missed. I'm trying to figure out how much revenue is going to be brought in, and so that's, that's one part of the, the thing. And then the other part is from findings where they got to figure out what they're going to spend, and so there'll be one large budget package. And usually be two bills, HB one, which is actually the budget, and then HB two, which is called a trailer bill. And that's all the stuff that's needed to implement the budget, and, you know, that has to be watched carefully. Because I think in the past, there've been cases where some things were stuck and needed, really didn't go along in the budget. And they should have been voted on up or down by themselves rather than there's a big package, and that's Democrats and Republicans, they both do it. And it's probably not the best way to run the government, but nevertheless, that's what goes on. So those will go down the road, and eventually will hopefully pass a budget, and then it'll go over to the Senate. But then the Senate, you're going to have a look at it, but they're going to have the advantage of it being further down the road. So they're going to have a better idea of what actual revenues are going to be, because it'll be a few months later. So they'll make some adjustments to it, and then they'll probably come back to a conference committee, and then there'll be a final vote. Probably not much before the very end of June, which is the deadline, it's going to get to the governor by then. So that's just sort of what, how the process is working right now. The couple of bills that listed you were looking at here, this one was two fifty-four, that was in judiciary. It was voted ITL, which is inappropriate to legislate, thirteen to seven, almost guarantees will not be passed. Just so you understand the language, because some people do get a little confused, but the, the bills are going to be what's called ITL, which is inappropriate to legislate, or ought to pass, OTP. But you have to be voting on the committee recommendation, so I'll use this example, I'm not in favor of an income tax. But if an income tax bill came out of Ways and Means, and the recommendation was inappropriate to legislate. I would be voting in favor of that recommendation, which would seem like, you know, you can get it, kind of get it backwards if you don't watch it carefully. Because you're voting against, you're voting with the, with the committee recommendation, not with the bill itself. So if you're in favor of a bill, you may be voting against it because you don't want it to be ITL, because you want it to pass. You could be opposed to a bill, it appears you're voting for it because you say ought to pass, ought to pass is the committee recommendation of no, kill the bill. So that's, that gets, you wouldn't believe how many times you get, you know, very, so we say enthusiastic emails. About how could you possibly ever vote for that bill, oh my God, this is horrible, you said you couldn't do this, and of course, I didn't. But it gets a little confusing sometimes, so, but when you get, when you get a vote, especially with the House as split as it is now. You get a vote coming out of committee that's thirteen to seven, it's probably going to be guaranteed that that bill is going to be killed. The other, another one you had was a HB fifty-one, which was requiring a warrant article to approve funding for lobbying. That's in muni and county government, and I don't really have a good feel, that's coming up this week, it'll be on the fifteenth is when they'll have their executive session, they'll give a vote on that. And on that note, when they have the hearings for the bills, they are on the internet, so you can watch the hearing. And you can participate other than to say you're in favor or opposed to a bill, and that would be, that gets logged in, so it is counted. But you, you kind of ask questions or anything like that, but you can submit on, if you go to the House website, there's a form you have to submit it. But it has to be before or up till the day of the hearing, so if a bill was, had a hearing last week, you can't send in a letter now. I mean, you could still send an email to all the members of the committee, but you couldn't go through the official process where you could just go in and say, I want to officially comment on this. So it's, it's a little bit of a change, but once people get used to that, it should be okay. And the six forty-seven, I just got an email on this, this is the so-called qualified immunity. But I was told that was defeated in, in committee, I think just. Just right, just briefly, yeah, and the seatments of chair of the committee says. Okay, I don't, I don't have to count, but it, it was, I think it was more, but more than a few votes, right?
For the people in the, that are listening in, did you kind of describe what these bills are?
Sure, sure.
Just their numbers.
Yeah.
But the first one, I don't remember what the first one.
Chinese, because I don't remember what it is.
Remote meetings.
Oh, remote meetings.
Remote meetings, oh, right, yeah, there, there just isn't much of a flavor for remote meetings in the House. It's been brought up a number of times, and it's been, and it's not just one party or the other, it's shown by a thirteen to seven vote there. There, you know, for hundreds of years, we've been without remote meetings, and that we just, just allow it to continue the same way. Like I say, you can participate, you can watch the hearings, and you can, obviously, you can submit emails or directly to the committee, you can submit comments in. But you can't, you can't come in and testify over the internet, so, and the second one was against about the warrant article to approve funding for lobbying. This has been kicking back and forth between the municipal association and some people in the state house for a number of years. And I just don't have a good feel for how that will come out, I'm going to probably guess it won't pass because it hasn't in the past, so. The qualified, so-called qualified immunity, is, that's, that's, that was defeated, there's a lot of concerns, I know, on the towns. That is going to be, because of this particular bill, which was added written by Bob Lind, who's a former Supreme Court Justice, was to chair that committee now. They tried to address some of the concerns that have been raised in the past, but the fact remains, what worries a lot of people is. You still have the town not to literally say a police officer did something, and it was illegal, and the person sued. They wouldn't sue the, the police officer, they would sue the town, so the town would be liable for it. So that's part of the question is, well, then, if you're opening up the door here for unfunded type mandate? Or is it simply because someone's bad behavior caused the action? So this, that's going back and forth, and it's not the last time I'm going to see this bill, it's because the whole concept is a little. It's difficult to get a good handle on because it was sort of invented by the Supreme Court a few years back, US Supreme Court. There's really no statutory language that spells it out, so it's all kind of open to interpretation, so that kind of goes around in circles. The next one you asked about was HB five five five, that was for funding requirements for retirement, and it would basically increase what the state does. And again, that's a. That comes up almost every year as well, I think, given what the governor said, this would be probably more in line is if we have surplus money, it looks like we will have some. Make it as a one-time funding, just like this last time, rather than make a permanent commitment to fund more money, but, you know. Maybe in the future, we don't have a surplus, but he's made that pretty clear in his statement, we'll see his budget tomorrow, actually. And I, so I, I think if there's money, if there, if there is some in there, it will be a one-time type thing included in the budget bill itself. And then this, the other one is HB fifty, you mentioned, which was finance, is in finance again, and that's another one of the state funding for retirement system. I think it changes some of the. Again, I don't see, I think this, I'm not, it's not a philosophical issue I'm talking about, it's just, I just don't see anything that's more than a one-time funding. Like we did this past budget, getting by the government, he's made that pretty clear, that he's going to, he's going to want to say, if we've got, you know, X million dollars left over. We can put it in this pocket for this year, but we're not going to make a commitment to put that on, on every year in the future, so. And although you were wondering, you brought up, there was one other one I got an email on, I think over the weekend.
Right.
Having to do with signage, I don't, I mean, that's not they, obviously, I'm pretty liberal about submitting legislation for my constituents, and certainly for the towns. I'll tell you upfront, it doesn't necessarily mean I'm going to agree with it, but I feel is that, you know, when you have four hundred legislatures. You live in the town of Barrington, let's say, for example, had some, something they wanted me to submit as a bill, I'd be more than willing to submit that in the, in the fall. When the next time would come up, because I know, I mean, I think everybody's seen the signs all over the place and so forth here, so. But that, that's just a matter of, and that would apply to anything, unless something was, you know, really way off. Or, you know, like I said, don't ask me to put it in income tax, okay, that's not going to happen. I actually made that mistake a long time ago, because I told my constituents that I would do, would put in any bill that wasn't unconstitutional. And somebody asked me to put that in, and I did, and I voted against it, and, but every couple of years, someone will come out and say, Harry's supported an income tax. Well, I never did, I did just a promise, I don't make that open-ended promise now, because I realize it caused a little bit too much. There has to be a little bit more discretion on there, but generally, on something like the bill you're talking about there, I would have, I, I have to look at the details to see whether I was supported. But I wouldn't have any trouble submitting it in as an answer.
Good to know.
So I don't know, anything else I can answer questions on?
I think you've addressed.
Thank you.
For coverage.
Well, and the other thing, question of the session will be running mostly on Thursdays, we're going to have the actual house sessions, and we'll be going through to June. Hopefully, that's the end of it, because I mean, we will have a budget passed, we, a couple of years back, even when Benson was governor, it was, the budget didn't get passed, and we were back there in August. And horrible thing, you don't even get paid my age up to the end of June, so, I know.
And there was one more, I sent you over the weekend, I think this is one you're sponsoring with Representative Turkot relative to the county commissioners for Stratford County.
Yes, yes, yes.
Um, read the community and the board in your perspective on that.
I, maybe you people, someone here might know better than I, but for whatever reason, unbeknownst to me, Stratford County is the only county in the state where they don't have commissioners. Stratford County is the only county in the state where they don't have commissioners that come from zones. So they're just all at-large commissioners. So other than, boy, about twenty years ago, we elected a guy from Stratford. Other than that, they've almost dove rock into Thomasworth, I mean, all the time. And this bill, what would it do was turn it around and break it up into three districts. So that the, basically the towns would have a chance of representation to have someone, because let's face it, Barrington's a pretty big town, but from Rochester. And there's a perspective of it, we, you know, there's still a lot of rural areas in these towns. And we just have a little different outlook on things. And this, you know, the way it goes now, it basically gets shut out of the government, the commission. So this would, hopefully that would get passed and we get to elect someone from, I don't know exactly how to remember the boundaries, but it will be, you know, something outside of the cities.
That was just my question, were there any boundaries put in this?
Yeah, I think there were, it had to be broken down because it has to, the population has to be out. In fact, I, I even think one of the new ones would even have like one ward from Rochester or something like that. I just don't have them memorized at the top of my head, but it's, the, the goal of it is to get some representation on the county commission for the uh, for the, for the towns. And if that is getting bigger and bigger, because I mean, with all this federal money floating around, I mean, federal money floating around, like no one can keep crack at this so much of it. And of course, I think everyone's aware here of looking at the new nursing home, which is a major, major issue. And, you know, I personally was a little disappointed the way that was handled. Uh, we were just given this thing until, wait a minute, where's the proposal? What's the, you know, I'm an engineer. Give me a need statement for the nursing home, like twenty pages. This is what we want this to do. Instead, they just said, this is what we're going to do. And then when we pushed hard enough, all of a sudden, they just literally pulled it out of their pocket. Oh, here's what it'll take to get the assessment that you're looking for, six million, two hundred thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars, eighteen cents. Well, obviously they had that information all along, they just never told us about it. So, but that's, that's gonna be a major, it's gonna be a major issue. Uh, the, the, and I'm not saying that it doesn't need to be fixed. I mean, um, I didn't realize for, when, where I've been on, on the election for a couple of times, that they didn't have the engine over there. They get some window units, but I mean, that's pretty tough, you know? Somebody's over there for not feeling good to begin with, that's why you're there. And it's ninety degrees outside and you just sit in there sweating. So I mean, it's, it's, it's an old facility, but we have to be prudent about how we, how we go about that as well. So.
Haven't they been doing upgrades to that facility though, too?
They've been doing some, yeah. They've been doing some, but it's, it's, you know, it is the the, it's still based on about, you know, nineteen seventies uh, rules. Goes back quite a ways because these, like all government rules, it seems like, there's always something new coming up, like the electrical code or the building code or whatever. So they've got some new requirements. And so the building, as it is right now, is sort of grandfathered in. But it doesn't, if it was, you couldn't build one like that today. And have it get approved, you wouldn't be able to use it for like Medicare, for example, because they, they wouldn't, they wouldn't fund it because of that. So. Now, you know, there's a lot of different thoughts on how they're going to be able to, if they have better facilities, then they'll get more people uh, that will be willing to pay, uh, pay a higher share of it. And uh, but you know, that's all been worked out in detail. So it's, it's a lot of money. We're talking, you know, tens of millions of dollars here. So it's a lot of money. And it's, when you go to spend that, you just need a little bit more of a better plan than I think than what they proposed. And they, they got the message and now we're working on it. Uh, what was the better method of doing it? Because I remember the, I was on the uh, I was, I was in the state house when the jail was built. And that's fifteen, twenty years ago now, something like that, the new, the so-called new jail. And I put a lot of effort into working with them on that particular thing. And I thought it was a really good idea. Because we made money, we make a lot of money off of that jail. I mean, it's like eight to ten million dollars a year. The federal government pays us for having those uh, and it's like COVID kind of knocked that down a little bit, but I'm sure it'll get back to normal. And it's basically temporary holding prisoners for the federal government is the, that that constitutes about an eight to ten million dollar revenue source. So it's uh, it can, you know, it's just a, that's, that's where we spent money, we spent well, when it actually comes to the advantage of the taxpayers. If there's any other questions, I'll see you all later.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out.
Please, please come back anytime you want to.
I will. And again, if you have thoughts on um, proposed legislation, asylum periods in September. So just let me know if you want to find me.
Um, Diana. I could just, so for the people who are listening, um, Connor, maybe you could talk about that, we have a resident who was encouraging Representative Barrington and our other delegation to look at, uh, could, could we have a law um, develop that would allow the town to remove signs in state right of ways? That didn't meet with um, the town regulations.
Right. And so this is one of those uh, state statutes which needs desperately to be updated based on um, recent Supreme Court, not so recent Supreme Court rulings. And so the, um, I can pull it up in just a second, but the uh, the state law relative to political signs is specific to political signs. And the problem with that is it's content-based regulation, which is explicitly what the, expressly what the Supreme Court said you cannot do. Uh, you, you cannot um, regulate something based on the content. We say here, if you have to read the sign to, to know whether to apply a rule or not, then you're violating somebody's First Amendment right. And so that statute relative to political signs is already in con, is contrary to the First Amendment and that Supreme Court rule. So it, but it's possible that it could be replaced by something that is, you know, irrespective of content. And the, the suggestion by resident Barrington uh, is that having a requirement that, that signs in the state right of way be taken down ten days after an election is great. But maybe that same regulation should indicate how, how long they can be due. Uh, or in, in this case, how soon, how long before an election. And the, the town's regulation contemplates that in a non-content-based way by saying that you can have signs, additional signs in this case, uh, on your property in, you know, in the uh, that are regulated by the town, um, a certain amount of time before an election. It's thirty days now. There's a zoning amendment to bring it to sixty days. And so it could be that the state could institute a similar requirement in the state right of way, uh, so that, you know, at the end of the day, you don't have to drive through communities and see signs in the state right of way year round, um, with, with no recourse.
Thank you.
There was, uh, no one, not appear to be anyone here from the school boards. They didn't have their legislative session on Saturday. Those who attended, they um, recommended bringing their twenty-seven million, eight hundred thousand plus or minus dollars to the, to uh, town voting ballot session on the fourteenth of March. There's one, um, there's one slot open on their board and there's one candidate, uh, Garth Swenson, uh, the incumbent. They also established a, um, they added money to their capital reserve for, um, for their building and they started a capital reserve account uh, for twenty-five thousand dollars for uh, future civic experiences.
Civic experiences.
That's pretty much what they talked about their last meeting. Scotty yellow had to ask to speak about the um, library survey.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
We appreciate the
Susan at all.
So, so I just, I saw the yellow on the library board. We've met numerous times, it feels like, over the past six months. And I'm joined by Rebecca Butcher, who is the vice chair of the Library Foundation. The, as you know, the trustees in the Library Foundation have been working together in partnership, looking at a proposal for a twenty twenty-four warrant article for a new library. Um, the last uh, effort towards a new library, I think, was of twenty twenty. And of course, that bond failed. And after a couple of years of um, pandemic and so on, we decided we really needed to take a completely fresh look at the um, the, the needs of the town and the desires of the town, the town's people for a new library. To that end, we um, conducted a survey in the fall. And uh, I want to give credit to Rebecca because she really designed the survey and set up the collection process and analyzed the data. That's why she's here. So if you wanna, she's obviously the technical person. I'm not even allowed to keep working.
Sorry. Hopefully this all.
Your bond.
Yes, thank you. Um, thanks for having us, actually. Um, in doing this work and even planning this survey, we used a lot of input from many of you and um, a lot of people in the town to even just help us understand what key questions are that we wanted to gather. So we launched the survey on voting day, actually, and had it open for um, about two months. And there were a variety of um, ways in which people could interact with the survey on paper, online. And we had three hundred and twenty people respond to all ages. Um, and about half of the folks use the library on a pretty regular basis and, and still about a third of people who responded don't use the library very often. So we felt like that was gonna give us some good, good input. Wasn't quite the sample um, that we got with the planning survey, but the planning survey had just come out and, and sometimes people don't like taking surveys a lot. So um, we just have a few slides to show you what um, came up in it. And you can see for us, we were interested in why do people even use the library? And the majority of people really still use the library for its bread and butter programs, books, media, um, digital, um, uh, online lending programs, that kind of thing. And then a lot of the programs that the library hosts. And I'm, I'm afraid that some of our colors aren't showing up, but there is some data down in those other um, services. So you can see the numbers of people also using it for notary services and technology and that kind of thing. Um, about three quarters of people gave the library top ratings in terms of how important the library is to them and to their family. Um, and uh, and you can see the distribution here. And actually, um, what's interesting is when we ask people how important the library is for Barrington as a town to have a free public library, even more people, ninety-one percent gave top ratings. So this is even people who use the library very rarely, who still um, said it was important for Barrington to have a free public library. So that was meaningful to us. We asked um, people in the survey to give some comments, open-ended comments on what they want most from a library in the future. Uh, so three hundred and twenty people um, provided answers. Actually, not, not everybody did. I think we had over two hundred responses though. And there were basically five big categories of things that people really want from the library. So you can see, again, still the bread and butter programs, books and media, interlibrary loans, but also still a place for people to connect, get information, enjoy programs and events. Um, a focus on early literacy and exposure to um, just discovery for young children was still a big focus. Generally, programming for all ages, games, clubs, just a source for people um, all the way up, adults and older adults. Um, diverse programming. And then the whole technology support and the offerings for people to, to research, job training, business development and other types of um, services that they come to the library to learn how to do. Um, so we um, brought out some of the quotes of people who were asking for these things and just will share them up in time for you to read them, but you can get a little flavor of the things that people are interested in. These comments are really representative of all the feedback that we got. So you can see this is important, um, you know, books and media for people of all ages. Just a lot of different sentiments here. Do you think I should read them? I don't think I will. People online and people here.
And yeah, the board has printed copies in for anybody following along at home. Um, there's a, the, the full copy of the PowerPoint is attached to the town administrator reform. Uh, I understand that that version is black and white. I'll make sure the color version's updated by tomorrow. Um, so if you're, if you want to dig deeper into something, you can access that.
What about people who are just listening on their telephones?
Sure. So I can give a little sample if you think that would be cool.
Or I could save you the breath because nobody's listening on their telephone.
Talk about something. Thank you. You have to act upside down. All right.
Well, let's, let's move on. But you can see that the, the upshot here in the comments around books and media and digital loans is really an opportunity for people to have more books, larger collection. You need an uncensored, unfiltered information and books that really cover the age span and for um, variety of purposes, including research. In terms of the community connections and events, this was the second major theme that really came out from the open-ended comments. Uh, people really want a, a space still for community events and opportunities to gather, together. Um, this surprises us because one of the things that we think might have been a reason why the um, the bond votes hadn't been as successful was because of the large community room that we had suggested or in our last plan. And yet, when we go to do listening sessions and get back from people, we still see folks wanting a community space, a space to connect with other residents in the town. When they have programming for different, for different things. So that's interesting to us. I mean, this uh, now that you have your meeting space here at the, at this new beautiful building, it might change people's minds when they start to come here and use it more, but I don't know if this is the largest room in the building or there's goodest room for, and if you imagine a space for doing more community events out of this building, but that's an idea. So um, this is just a smattering of some of those quotes around community connections. In terms of early reading and creative discovery, this is just more the early literacy programs and the young children um, programs that are kind of a staple of what the library offers now. And these are still very popular and people see this running through the, the span of ages all the way up through teens and um, and young adults and running the gamut from music to reading to um, crafts and, and that kind of thing. To just start to appreciate um, the value of books and, and coming together. And then um, other programs for people of all ages, you can get a flavor here from some of the programs and resources that, that people are looking for, for teens and adults and older adults. Including some adult learning and even senior oriented activities. Lastly, um, there was a category of, of comments around uh, people wanting more tech support and access for doing research or job training, business development, or even accessing services. Uh, and during COVID, actually, a lot of people use the library to learn about uh, where they could get uh, additional food stamps, um, SNAP funding or to get um, vaccination information. And so we're using it even for health-related information. So this, this helps us get a better idea as we go back and look into the planning of uh, what people are interested in looking for as we design things. We asked a question about where people would like to see a new library. And um, we got a pretty equal split between folks wanting it still in the location that it's at right now and also at some kind of town center location, which we left pretty open in the survey. We described it as being kind of around the Caleb Christmas Dove area. And so you can see a large percentage, forty percent of people thought that was actually a good idea. About three hundred people responded to this. Um, other people were thinking about by the schools, but there's not um, a very big sentiment for that. So I'm gonna turn it back to
Yeah, I can put my glasses on, that'll help. So um, with that kind of information, we're looking at where are we going from here? And after we talk about this, I'm gonna sort of tie in a little bit with some of the town planning um, uh, activity of late. So our, we really want to see this new library be really an integrated um, function for the town, not as a separate, the library is over here and everything else is over there. We really feel it's important. We've been certainly having good relationships with the rec department um, and administratively with all the other departments. But in planning a new library, we really think it's important that we have that kind of an integration. So we certainly see ourselves working closely with the town administrator, the town planner. And um, members of our trustee board met with members of the rec commission last fall. And we intend to continue that um, relationship going forward. We also feel that um, it's really important. We gained some input from uh, the public. We want to be sharing these results and we actually have released some of these results. Um, and I think uh, some portion of that is posted on the um, And I think some portion of that is posted on the foundation's website and more will be as we go forward. But it's not just ending with the survey. We have, it's in red ink here, so you'll really remember this. We have a community listening session that we have set for March twenty-fifth. Connor's been very helpful in getting us the location at the ECLC. A number of us attended the master plan project that they did in December. And we were really impressed with how well that went. I haven't talked to the planner since to see if she was as pleased with it as, as those of us who participated were. But it really, we intend to follow that same kind of format with discussion groups on specific topics and get that additional input before we go forward with design work.
In fact, the architect is planning to be there.
Yeah, the architect will be coming. At this point, the topics we really are going to focus on there, one is again site, that's sort of the external environment for, that's needed for a library, internal uses and environment, sort of sustainability, efficiency, operational efficiency, that sort of thing. And the fourth topic is looking at sort of the community use of the library. And I think we will, even though we don't have any ownership of it, I think it's an opportunity for us also to engage the public in discussions of, if the library were to move into a new building, what about the use of the existing library space? And how can that be folded into this sort of community, community space, the appropriate and optimal utilization of that? So this is where I want to just walk you through a couple of things that we've leaned from the research that the planning board did. And this is very, very summarized. They had many slides that they showed. But the current master plan vision for two thousand and seven was outlined. And these are things that, that in their survey, as I understand it, people commented on. And I noticed, of course, in a couple of those, focus on a well-planned village center with a new library slash community center there. And again, people commenting about wanting to have space to socialize. I think that's both internal and external space. They had lots of maps at that planning board session. And these were some quotes that they had taken out from their surveys when they asked people what their favorite spot was, what new community features people were looking for. And again, you see town center and library highlighted there, issues around traffic safety, obviously, when you get into that downtown area. Transportation issues, again, cultural ideas came up again. And again, many people mentioned a new and expanded library. I don't want you to have the impression that because we're sharing this with you, this means that we've already decided we're moving to the town center. It truly is on the table, as you could see from our own survey. It's, there's really two schools of thought on that, so we haven't come to any conclusion as yet. Finally, this is just a very simple slide. In doing all of this work, the sort of the key, I'm going to say inside players, meaning the library focus group, are the library trustees, the foundation, and the friends of the library as well. S P, S M P Architecture and Valen Construction were selected years ago. Actually, S M P was selected back, I think, around two thousand and eight or nine or something as the architectural firm we've been working with us. They have the patience of Job, obviously. And Valen Construction, we had selected as the construction management firm last time around. And we intend to continue working with them. The other key groups are the community volunteers, which ranges from people who volunteered to attend a session and share information as well as other folks, we may have other committees along the way, we're not sure at this point. And then community stakeholders, it's really everybody else from, from town, from different town departments, different groups in town, businesses and so on. So rather, sort of, I guess I'd like to say holistic. And finally, we are very open to and want to continue communication with the select board, administration and everyone. And this is the sort of the easiest way to reach out to us. Obviously, the, the library website has a focus of what's going on in the library and that sort of thing. The library foundation website here has a lot more information about, with a focus on the future library planning. And I'm currently the trustee chair, we'll see if I still am on the board after election. But the address here is sort of an ongoing way to contact the trustees, not just me, obviously. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions, but I hope this has helped give you a flavor for what we're hearing at this point. Yes.
Haven't you guys been offered a parcel land downtown, in the downtown area before?
But. Years, many years ago. We were, we had discussions with the folks at Christmas Dove, the Svenssons, about property there. Including the Dove itself at one point. We actually spent some money considering whether that entire Christmas Dove building could be renovated into a library slash community center slash town hall, long before your time, Connor. But, and that didn't go anywhere. So yes, we did look at that years ago. The, at the time, I think there was not the, obviously, there was not the comprehensive development planning that has been going on in recent years.
Yeah, I thought it was a developer that reached out to you guys and said, hey, this would be a perfect spot for you. And the library denied it and said, you know, why don't you just cut us a check for the view of the property?
I, I was on the library board until about two thousand and twelve. And then took a hiatus and went on the select board for a few years. Now I'm back by popular demand. But, so I can't speak to what happened in that time after two thousand and twelve. I do not know what the deliberations of the trustees were. But when I was on the board, the communications we had were directly with the Svenssons in that area.
Gotcha. And then I appreciate what you did with, you know, the going out and, you know, soliciting, you know, people that say, hey, you know, what do you think we need and whatnot? But with three hundred and twenty responses, I mean, there, there's a little over seven thousand registered voters in town. So that's four and a half percent of the town voters that, that have responded to this. And that leaves ninety-five point five percent of people that haven't said their piece because if they may or may not agree with it, why would they, you know, quote-unquote, waste their time on a survey?
Well, one of, the only thing I can tell you is that we really made our best effort by being at the polls. And thank heavens for long lines because probably even reluctant library supporters got stuck by our table. And really reached out to people. If people choose not to answer a survey, there's nothing we can do about that.
I understand. I just had to put the numbers comparative, so people listening are watching.
Similarly, I think the, the planning board survey had about six hundred, something like that, which is a very good return. It's more people than we had, obviously, responding, but it's still a small percentage. So at some point, we have to make decisions based on.
Hey, I, I understand. I just had to say it, so.
No, that's fine. And that's why I also provide this kind of information to try and let people know if additional people have ideas, thoughts. And also, we are going to be, the meeting on the twenty-fifth is not just by invitation to traditional supporters. It is open to the public. We will be setting up a, I'm going to say a voluntary registration form through the, the library has a registration system for their program, so that we'll just know how many people to expect. But we really encourage everybody with all kinds of thoughts and ideas to join us then.
Beautiful.
And hopefully you will as well.
I'd be in Idaho.
Oh, excuse us.
I'll take a break. I would, I would suggest that the hundred and twenty is more than ten of the delivered accession. Mr. Bailey, I have a question.
Madam Chair, it's nice to see you again. On that question that Mr. Sikoshia asked you was the fact that it was Brian Wetlands involved down there because the Swenson family was going to give that property to the library. And Brian Wetlands were there. And then Mr. Clark, who was chair, they, they took a vote directly after the approval and the select board voted not to put the library there. That's, that's what happened there.
Oh, so, yeah.
But it was only down there, but the Swensons really were A1 in the fact that they were going to give.
When I, when, when I was on the board, it was not going to be a gift, so I guess that changed over the years.
That's when they were dividing up the property, what happened, yeah.
I see.
It's going to be a nice season flow. Sorry for that.
I, I'm told by our architect that, not that you want to build in Wetlands, but you can actually build anywhere. I don't know how, you know, ultimately. But I think at this point, and Connor is more familiar with the available property in the town center than I am, so.
Yeah, I could speak to that briefly. And, and this, you know, ties in partially to the, to the greater conversation about the town center, the zoning district that exists and the proposed TIP district, the tax increment financing district. So you've all heard me say it a few times, but our zoning in that district requires that if land is developed, fifteen to twenty-five percent of that land is committed to civic use or open space. So that's land that cannot be developed by the developer, but can be developed by the town for any purpose. That could be a gazebo, that could be a pickleball court, but it could also be a building. And, you know, I think the, every plan, you know, and you saw it on the TIP district presentation, dating back to two thousand and three, every time the residents had an opportunity to talk about the town center, they talked about having some municipal presence in the town center. I think for some, they really wanted a town hall. I think for others, they really wanted a library. I think others talked more generally about a community center or senior center. But having a municipal presence there has been part of the conversation by my reading since the beginning. And what that is, who knows, but the zoning is designed to make land available for municipal development. The TIP district, how the TIP district makes, would make that more favorable is it would allow the town and a developer to have a conversation about a mutual development project that could accomplish multiple goals, whether it's a pickleball court or a building or, you know, expanded parking. And the town would be able to have funds available to have some skin in the game and promote the, the bigger picture goals. And so I don't think, given the, the undeveloped land that exists in the town center and some of the existing projects that have a large portion of their property that need to be committed to civic use or open space, I don't think it's out of their own possibility at all that there's property available for a municipal building in the town center. And, you know, it would, it would require fleshing that out and getting the specifics. And I think in cooperation with helping the, those involved in the library project determine the most suitable location for a library.
Well, I'm going to say two things. One, I was just trying to answer the question that Mr. Sikoshia had asked about what happened prior to.
Of course.
And I, and I hope you just weren't saying that just to school me again.
No, no, no.
On everything else that we've gone forward and did. I appreciate the presentation. I'm sure other people do also. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to respond to the, to the four percent response rate, if we take it out of the, out of the full population of, of voters that could answer a survey. I just would say that it was helpful to see that the age span went all the way from teenagers all the way up to ninety-year-olds. And it also was helpful to see that thirty percent of the responders rarely use the library. So when I think about a survey, I'm a survey methods person in my day job. And when I think about sampling this, we saw some of the indicators that this could be a somewhat similar sample to the town in terms of use and interest in the library and in terms of age range of voters. And we didn't get into a lot about people's demographics and income and education level and all that. So yes, small number, but I think we can, we can feel some sense of this still represented people who don't use the library.
So would you consider this a, a large sample or a small sample?
No, it's a small sample, but it can still be representative.
No, I, I agree.
So it's a good, it's a good point and we'll look forward to having more input opportunities. And yeah, the good, the other thing that keeps coming through is some of the same things that we have heard since two thousand and seventeen continue to, to be the same themes that come along. And we obviously need to have opportunities to talk to a wider set of audiences. But sometimes, you know, people are not interested in talking about it. So we, we take that to be a sign that, you know, this is not maybe appealing to everybody to, to get out and be involved in conversations, but a lot of people have been, so. Anyway, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I look forward to seeing what you decide for our location.
Well, and as I'd say, I just reiterate, March twenty-fifth, even if you're not, you know, in Idaho, I'm sorry, it won't be live by Zoom. We'll keep you posted on what we pay for it as I'll be.
How do you often decide on a location? I might decide on a location when there's, is it the trustees alone or will be the foundation? Will we have a?
No, the trustees ultimately will have that decision. But quite honestly, if the, if the inclination is to design something for the town center instead of on Ramsdale Lane, then we would really be working very closely with the town and Connor, with developers. If the decision is to say on Ramsdale Lane, we've already got the engineering, you know, we know that piece of property. So we would, the trustees out of our capital reserve, we'd be using some of those funds to pay for engineering, site engineering and analysis of any downtown site. But as I say, that's going to become the point at which we're working very closely with Connor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Chair, there's a question from the floor, but I suspect it's not called a comment, and so you go ahead.
Very public.
Okay. Go ahead. You guys suspend the rules and take.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can you clarify something, TIP district, what, what area is that in town?
It's a great question. So it's the, it encompasses the greater town center area. So like the town center and parts of the village zoning district around the routes nine and one twenty-five intersection. And it extends out route nine about to the middle school and about to Ramsdale Lane and up route one twenty-five, about to Scrub Pond Road and about as far south as Commerce Way. And those extents are pretty narrow along the highway. But the, the most of the land area is encompassed around the intersection of nine and one twenty-five.
Well, on that comment, there's one law that's on the hill off Oak Hill, that's the biggest law in that area. Fifteen percent is really not much to get a, a library or something like that in there and packing everything. But my first comment, oh, P N L A three thirty-four, call me trip like, my first comment is I make it there. Ramsdale Lane, there's still people in town, there's act terrorism, they've got grounds here and stuff. And they right now, they're not, they're, I can speak honestly, I can speak for a lot of people who vote, that nothing happens to that because the town all being torn down. That, will that change? I don't know. But it still gets brought up to me to this day. So that's what I'm saying. And then the idea of going down there, there's certain blims of laws, fifteen percent. So I spotted, I personally spotted down there, I can be centered on that, me personally. But we don't own land down there, so now even to sell people, buy land for one of the big lots up on the hill, it'd be enough to incorporate something like that. But there is another one from town hall that's kind of big, built town hall right over here, that's not for sale. It's all going to cost money, so they get, and the space is just so small. And brought up earlier. So I think a lot, big sale with them. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I couldn't make out what you were saying.
Basically, Ramsdale Lane, a lot of things act terrorism. We're standing on the old town hall and we're ready to see nothing go bad. That's why I get people in the community.
Would rather not see anything on Ramsdale?
Right.
Okay.
I don't know how long this is going to last, it's bad, but.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fair. Okay, anything else, a comment to the library, reference library? All right, great fun. Shall we move on? Consent agenda?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you very much. On the consent agenda, which is hit or vote, which I vote yes and no, it does have, it does not have anything to do with items A and B, the minutes for the meeting, because I wasn't here. And just some advice, I vote present, that cover everything and make it right.
There's no prohibition on voting to approve the minutes that you didn't attend the meeting for.
Okay.
And so if you feel comfortable voting in support of the whole consent agenda, you could. Or if you felt more comfortable voting present, the, the trouble with that is that it's a, it's a unanimous consent agenda. So if you want to, it requires unanimous consent and a present vote, I don't think is considered unanimous.
Thank you.
It's a weird.
Considered, we're considered part of.
Is a positive vote.
Okay.
Either way.
I just want to make it.
Okay. Make a motion about the consent agenda, is anyone, I'm saying I don't have a problem with any of the consent agenda, I suppose.
The only question is for the energy rebate, do we need to figure out where that's going or just?
Not yet.
This is just accepted.
Yep.
Okay.
Good question.
I move that we pass the consent agenda and also list it.
Second. Moving to seconded. All in favor? Unanimously. Point, but I think we have them under discussion.
Correct.
Mr. McIver, staff report.
Thank you. So we're here, the first meeting in February, actually the second. We had a quick one after the deliberative session, but we didn't recognize the employment anniversaries. We have in February, four years ago, we hired Tyler Courier, who's currently a police sergeant. Three years ago, we hired our deputy chief, Daniel Brooks, from the Durham Police Department. And our deputy building inspector, James Jenison, was hired one year ago this month. So typically, a pretty light month for employment anniversaries. Usually, we do our hiring April, May, June timeframe after budget passes. But these were turnovers that that happened this timeframe. So moving on, the just a quick review of deliberative session. So it was a very lengthy session, which I think the the positive aspect of that is that residents were interested. They were engaged, involved. The most time was spent on the noise ordinance, as as it were, thirty-two minutes on the noise ordinance. Followed second by the library warrant article, which I think was twenty-seven minutes. And we covered all of the warrant articles. The moderator was gracious enough to allow review of the zoning amendments as well, which couldn't be amended. But good to give residents an exposure to those. Couple of things that we're doing, this board, we talked about the creation of a voter guide. That has been very, we've had a lot of positive feedback from that document. And so that PDF is available. We went through a, you know, series of updates, get it out there so we can get kind of final information. And so this week, we're going to start printing copies to make available at the town hall, the library, and various other places throughout town. And so folks that don't have access to the online version, they can come out and get a paper copy. And so make sure that your constituents are aware of that. Something else that's in progress, a review, the first draft of the postcard that we'll mail out to residents. It's going to cost us about two thousand dollars, which was what about what we estimated it would cost. So that will get a postcard, a six-inch by nine-inch postcard into everybody's mailbox in Barrington. It will highlight the importance of voting on March fourteenth and where to find more information, like the printed voter guides or the online voter guides. And so that will go out. Right now, we have it scheduled to hit mailboxes the week of February twenty-seventh. So enough time in advance so folks can still request an absentee ballot, can inform themselves on the the ballot initiatives. One other thing that we started this year, the on the town's Facebook page. So obviously, we have the voter guide, we have the online warrant page that has all this information. And we want to get as many eyes on it as possible. And so on our Facebook account, what we did is every day, starting last week up until the Friday before the election, we featured one warrant article. And each one of those posts has just one warrant article, the language of the article, the explanation, a video link directly to the deliberative session presentation and information where to find the rest of the voter guide. And so our idea is that that's a great way for people that are interested in individual articles to be able to share them or start a conversation with their friends or neighbors about an individual article. So we started in reverse order. We started, we just got through the petition warrant articles and the noise ordinance. And we'll go all the way up through the zoning articles leading up up to the election. So if any of them are of interest to you or anybody listening at home, look for those, share those off to start a discussion, ask questions, send your questions to us. And just again, another effort to make sure people are informed when they get to the ballot box on the fourteenth and show up on the fourteenth. So, yeah, we have the voter guide, the budget webpage, the TIF district webpage, the police negotiations webpage, fiber webpage, the noise update webpage, information to request an absentee ballot, the printed voter guide. And finally, we have a the candidate forum, which is hosted by the moderator in his, you know, citizen capacity. And that will be this Thursday, February sixteenth, from six-thirty to eight-thirty. I will assist, as I have in years past, to make it available for virtual participation and to make sure that it's recorded. And this year, Jack Gale will be co-moderating the event. So encourage folks to come out in person, participate virtually. The link to participate virtually, barrington.nh.gov/2023candidatforum. You can also on the town's homepage, the calendar, click on February sixteenth, it'll take you right there. There's a big watch live link on top there. Mr. Mantra.
You might mention where that, the in-person is going to be held here, right?
Yep, right here in this room.
Right.
And so that's six-thirty to eight-thirty. The six select board candidates, if they all participate, will be from six-thirty to seven-forty. And the four library trustee candidates that they participate will be from seven-forty-five to eight-thirty. And so that's the review of the deliberative section. And I also just know, to make sure to touch base with the chair about your availability to attend the March fourteenth voting session, to make sure that we have select board representation throughout the day. We have a couple of meetings I'll remind you again a couple of times, but just to put that on your radar. Moving on, appointments for terms expiring in two thousand and twenty-three. So starting at the next meeting, so we've been working with boards, committees and commissions to get anybody interested in being appointed or reappointed to collect their applications. You'll see a long, long list of those for discussion at the February twenty-seventh meeting. And they'll all be eligible for a vote at the March sixth meeting. And so there's still time to get an application in if somebody wants to be a part of that, you know, kind of annual process. Obviously, vacancies that exist throughout the year or vacancies still exist, we'll be able to address those, not just at those two meetings. But this has worked well as an organized way to make sure that we kind of do it all at once. And so I'm glad to say that we have some new applications from folks looking to join the zoning board especially. And so that will be great, especially considering that Mr. Bailey will be stepping down after many years on the zoning board. So losing some institutional knowledge, so it'd be good to pick up some some new some new blood on the zoning board.
Connor, I have a question about the candidates forum. Last year, I think we had school board candidates at that same night.
Yes, so it's uncontested.
Oh, it's uncontested.
And so as I understand, the moderator was going to ask the school board or the school candidates, the candidates for school office, if they wanted to make an introduction or not. But he was, he intended to focus the forum on contested races. Good question. And. And I will. Yes, I will be Tiffany today. So you have the intent to cut on map two thirty-four, lot twenty-five dash one and the termination agreement for Hard Rock Development LLC. You'll remember this was, you know, we discussed this, I think, back in November. The existing contract for between Hard Rock, the development agreement between Hard Rock and the town allowed the developer to say, if I can't get the permits, I'm stepping away from the agreement, which is what they did. But what the development agreement didn't include is a license for the town to have the rights to all of the engineering work that was done. And there was a lot of time and money spent, and obviously, the town owns the land, it's of interest to the town. Fortunately, Hard Rock LLC, Arley Green et al. was interested and willing in signing over the the license and ownership of that work to the town at at no cost, but that was the termination agreement. To ticker it up, and that's all.
Very good. Moving on to old business. We had voted for this earlier. I asked for some specifications. What we need to do is authorize the use of the ARCA funds do the paper of the generator for that public safety. Certainly.
If I could, I know that we're, question for you, we ordered a generator for here. Does generator connection putting this one in as well?
Yes.
Okay. This goes against, you know, this is just one estimate, right? We don't have multiple.
Right.
Kind of goes against our our better practice of getting the soliciting three separate bids and, you know, keeping everybody honest.
So and and that's why it's on the agenda, not on the consent agenda. Obviously, we've talked about this generator a number of times. So what we what we had talked about back when we had a conversation about the generator for this building, the generator for the public safety building and the generator for the rec library building, is that there's there's a benefit in having the installation and maintenance by a known entity or, you know, a common party. And so generator connections was competitively selected in conjunction with this building. And so the the idea would be, and and this is consistent with the purchasing policy. I mean, it's a big dollar item, and so it's certainly up to the select board. But the the idea would be, we competitively selected this organization for, you know, with multiple proposals for this building. And we're using that selection to to execute on additional, you know, additional scopes at the other buildings. And so it would certainly be up to the select board would rather independently solicit proposals for each facility and potentially have, you know, separate installations, separate outfits. That's certainly a decision the select board could make. And so that was the, that's the history of the conversations we've had. But that certainly doesn't tie this sitting select board from making a different decision.
I don't know. I think I would like to see a little bit more breakdown and you know, you know, how much is the generator? How much is it going to cost to install the generator and then, you know, the testing along with it? And then the propane connection, any trenching, backfilling, that's additional cost that's going to be associated with this project that's not on here. But, you know, your average three-phase, you know, hundred KW generator ballpark cost goes for anywhere between thirty and forty thousand. So that's why I would like to to look at this a little bit better and just see where it's going because.
There was a full report on the link, but I don't think it had anything about trenching and backfilling.
It it did address it, the the location where the generator would be installed. And that was one of the benefits of having CSI Engineering come out, which I think it was actually your suggestion that we get engineer specifications. And one of the value add to that is we're able to evaluate some of the site conditions at that time. And so we have propane at the public safety building that runs over to right past the existing oil generator and into the building. There's actually unused conduit in that same location that we would be able to utilize. And so there's, there won't be any need for trenching. And we'll be able to install the generator in the, you know, the same general location that's a grassy area in between them.
But we're gonna, well, unless we have a very high supplement of propane over there, you know, we're gonna need, you know, another tank. So, I mean, there are going to be gas, you know, unless we have an abundance and we're good. But, you know, a twenty-two KW generator will, you know, chew up two to three gallons of propane an hour.
Okay.
So, you know, I still think there's going to be some more costs associated. But I think the correct thing to do, even if it's for all three facilities, is, you know, hey, because, you know, generator connection, yes, local, love them, great guys, great company. But there's also other companies out there that that go ahead and they do maintenance and whatnot on on generators, whether it's a different one or, you know, polar, and we could spec what we want and what we're looking for because we have that information for engineers. But that's my my opinion.
Yeah, and like I said, I was only bringing forward what the select board had previously talked about. And so we can change course, that's no problem. Just give me that direction. Happy to do so.
First of all, the first thing is I had friends just had a generator re-done. And John told the rooms where they had replaced the existing line from the tank, so they had a new line for, that was just one of the questions there. And secondly, I just think that we should put this package together broads free. That's my opinion. And put them together straight and make sure that we had everything utilized so that we don't get stuck with these little things in the middle, you know, like Jim suggested, trenching or whatever. But I think we should just put all three and then get it done with and all the part of the bid, we should turn around and ask the propane suppliers around for putting new tanks in and changing them and pricing and everything else to take care of the concern that he brought up. And we might be, we might have to get to a little submarine, as they call it, the submarine type, I think it's. I don't know, be gallons of.
Five hundred or a thousand.
Yeah.
So this this building was, generator's already purchased. And so we received a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant for generator and other emergency operations center equipment for this. That's when we went through the competitive process and selected generator connection. The the recreation library building with the communication tower, we have an active FEMA emergency management grant to pursue that full full installation. It's actually looking like that, well, we're waiting for the details. It's looking promising, but we're not in a position to execute on on that one. And so if the board wants to advertise the the public safety building independently, that's fine, but I would advise against rolling it together with the rec library building. And, you know, I, going back historically, that was the sentiment of the select board in understanding that we were pursuing three generators. We kind of wanted one organization to be responsible for the three of them. So we went through a competitive process and we're talking about using no commitment. So I understand the benefit in having one organization do the two. I just think, given the timing of the grant program, I don't think we're in a position where we could advertise both together and make a commitment to pursuing.
Is there sunset clause in these grants?
It hasn't been secured yet. There is. The ARCA font sunset is twenty twenty-six, so I think we have some time. But I don't think that we want to delay unnecessarily delay pursuing the generator for the public safety building. The generator here was originally ordered, was scheduled for January. And the update as of today is June. And that's just supply chain issues with this specific one, they're having trouble sourcing the engine. But the having the, you know, we could advertise, but I wouldn't wait to until we're ready for the rec library building for the public safety building because we we should get moving on that.
How much was the generator for here?
With the automatic transfer switch and the site work, fifty fifty-two thousand, I can get you an exact number, ballpark.
Questions, eh?
But we received a grant for a hundred and twenty-five?
Correct.
And so the excess money?
Yeah, it was, it's an emergency operations center grant. So we were able to use the grant to buy some of the radio equipment that we have on order for this building. And we were able to install some of the door access and cameras using that, those grants. And so we were able to take, you know, pick up some of the scope of the the building project with that grant, which was the plan from the beginning. We knew it was likely we'd be able to secure those grant funds.
Thank you.
I imagine it's a warranty for the first year, so are we paying annual service contracts for the generators?
So the the purchase, the service is included with the purchase with generator connection. And so that's.
For how long is the service?
I don't, I'll get back to that.
We're going to suspend the rules here. Yes, Dan, you were had some connection with this.
On the generator, please come up, I'll get you. Daniel A three thirty-four, I'll call you trip bike. On the generator, you're going from diesel to propane, it might be a graph clean fuel. There's other programs on the diesel trucks in the town that are still available, you're going to all look into it, so all three will be incorporated.
Thank you.
And so what's what's the budget here? Still waiting.
So there's just one thing I wanted to clarify, was the original contract with generator generator connections for all three?
Yes.
Yeah.
They they did a competitive bid here for this one. You know, they, we chose generator connection for this one. They they gave a surprise on that one, but just generated connection for the public.
Right.
And so actually, what the one was, just proceed with this place.
So it sounds like there's maybe two options on the table. One, it sounds like Jim's advocating for taking the public safety building project and advertising that separately. So taking the specifications from CSI Engineering, advertising that and separately competitively selecting the generator procurement and installation at the public safety building. And the the second option would be to proceed with generator connection for the public safety building as proposed.
I'd also be curious to to echo what Rob said, follow up on how long the service is, because that's huge, you know?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Uh, being a public safety building, uh, public safety person?
So I have no issue with going out to bid. I don't. It's a transparency issue for me. I'm all for it. This deficiency, uh, George Joy, I live in the town of Barrington.
Thank you.
Um, this deficiency was brought to the attention of the boards two years ago in March. Um, I know this because I was in Texas and my deputy chief had just been shot at. So two years have gone by. Now we're talking June. We're going to advertise, we're going to kick that can down the road more. Three years? That's, to me, unacceptable. It's not. It, it, the deputy chief has mentioned it. My staff has mentioned it. The fireside has mentioned it. This is an unacceptable failure to me. And again, I'm all for advertising. We should. We do it at my level. This is a big ticket item. We can't keep kicking this down the road. This needs to happen. This is an area of frustration. Yes?
Um, during your busy power outage, did you have outageals?
Uh, we did. It functioned. Uh, I know we've had, I don't want to speak out of school and I'm about to. Uh, I know Phil Booty has been down there working on that at different times. I know other people have been inside that shack, working on it. I don't know what they did. That's not my area of expertise. I'm not a, I'm not a wrench turner, uh, but I know they've been in there. I can only imagine band-aiding it together, but I don't know. If I, if fire chief were here, he would be able to speak more intelligently to that than I can. But there have been folks in there. My concern is that's just going to die in the midst of trying to get this done by June. And the public safety building is going to be without another emergency like we have in the past.
I, I think there's, there should be a little question that this needs to be done now. Um, I don't know how fast the bid process would push it down the road. I don't know how ready these people are to move in when they would start to have any sense of that, I don't know. Ain't got any sense.
Thirty days in March or, you know, or give them the month of March to send in their bid and, you know, we already have, you know, whatever, that hundred KW uh coler, you know, and we can keep with that. But it's just, you know, this is one of those things. Do we rush ahead and go, hey, we'll just do this because it's a now thing? And yes, it's been, you know, two years. Do I think putting it out to bid is going to kick the can down the road? I don't, because it's just, it's going to keep everything on us. We're going to select and we're going to move forward.
Yeah, and so I included all the background, obviously, in my report. Um, there's links, folks can, can go back and, and look at it. What I don't want the board to feel is that your backs against the wall. Now you have to make a certain decision. Uh, and it, this isn't rushed. I mean, I think the, the timeframe in, from where we, when we identified the problem, now we got to here, uh, there are a lot of things that have happened here. So back in, you know, very quickly, the, in twenty-twenty-one, the select board said, uh, yes, we want to use our refunds to buy a generator. And that's when the select board said, uh, we, we were talking about the Newtown Hall. We were talking about the rec library. Hey, let's try to get them all done, you know, bu- by a common entity. And we talked about having engineer specifications done at the public safety building. We started that process in concert with the public safety building, talking about an, an expansion renovation. And so it, it was good timing to some extent because we had an engineering firm that could evaluate what impact a renovation expansion would have on the power supply uh or the power needs of the public safety building. Uh, but it also caused for delay because now we, we're not going to buy a generator that's going to be immediately outdated when we do renovation expansion. And so the, we had CSI engineering incorporate the approximately four thousand square foot addition and renovation of the public safety building and make their specifications based on that. And it's, it is those specifications that we use uh to solicit of the quote that you have in front of you uh from generator connections. And so we, we've been moving the ball forward. There are steps that, um, there are steps that uh responsibly needed to be taken. Uh, but I don't want this, the select board to think that whether you pull the trigger tonight or go out to bid for, you know, a month and make a decision in a month and a half, the generator's not going in tomorrow. Uh, you know, the, the supply chain issues of especially the generator this size uh that we're experiencing here is the same i- issues that they're going to, that is going to be experienced with this bill. With the public safety.
If we ask for bids tomorrow, uh, we might be able to consider for the March twentieth meeting, which would be the new board, would be the new board.
Would, would they end up submitting a new bid?
Yeah, it would be a sealed bid process. And, and, you know, unfortunately, the generator connection would be disadvantaged, right? Because the, you know, going through that bid process, they would have, their, their competition would have, okay, well, we know, we know the price to beat. Uh, whether generator connection would update their bid or submit the same bid, you know, that's up to them. Um.
But if we went off the bit, we would turn around and uh have three bids.
There's also a potential that somebody else bids. And it ends up being them anyways, so. It's a lot of places went out of business.
I'm, I'm happy to, to do whatever. Uh, give them my marching orders and, and we will execute.
What do we owe the town of Barrington?
Probably get a second bid, but to have a very short time thing.
Right, favorite. Thank you. So proposal is to forbid, ask for bids.
Advertise for sealed bids.
And get them back before the twentieth of March meeting. Be a month or so, and we can make a decision then. New board. Don't have, don't have a bad one, that's true.
Great, understood.
Okay. All right. New business, none. What board? Comments? Must cap yellow.
So the issue that came up from planning board is we approved the Malago subdivision. Um, and in that, there is a conservation area and there's also a snowmobile trail. And the town, um, residents were very adamant that they wanted the preservation of that snowmobile trail, but it did need to be relocated on the property. So there's a lot of back and forth at meetings about where that trail would be located. It seems there's agreement on uh the location of the trail now. Um, th- there was concern from some residents that although um the planning board is approving this subdivision with the idea that snowmobile would, uh, trail would be there, subsequent boards could uh change their mind. And there was a discussion about whether this could be a snowmobile that we would designate as in perpetuity. We were advised at the meeting that select boards, uh, planning boards, any board can't do that. You can't sort of tie the um hands of future boards. So the planning board asked the select board if we would take a look at this issue. Um, the town is going to accept this conservation easement. So it will be held by the town uh to see if there's any way that language could be included um into that conveyance. And I don't know the, the answer to that, but maybe that's something we can ask Connor to.
Yeah, we already know, yeah, we already know the answer. Um, so the, the town, uh, you remember the select board has asked for kind of preapproval. Is the select board willing to accept the deed to the open space? And so it's a little bit different than like a conservation easement. The town actually owns the land, uh, but it's committed to open space uh per our regulations and it's protected uh by state statute. And so as the landlord, the town would have the ability to restrict and allow within the confines of the, the open space plan, um, what it saw fit. And so it's, the select board would have authority to designate a snowmobile trail. The, the tough part is the, that there, it's unlikely to be effective for the select board to try to make a perpetual commitment to a snowmobile trail, trail in a specific location. In that the, if the town owns the property, a future select board could change the, the location or the allowance for uh the snowmobile trail, so. So what we, um, what stage of the process we're at right now is we've asked the developer to submit to the town uh what restrictions he'd like to see, restrictions and allowances. Sounds like what he wants to see, he wants to see a snowmobile trail. He wants to see it available to snowmobiles. Sounds like he doesn't want it available to any other vehicles, you know, on this recreation trail. He's going to submit that uh open space plan to the select board and we'll review that uh when it comes in and, and make a decision. So it's a good primer uh for the select board to be considering that. Uh, but it's important also to know that a, a conservation subdivision, the open space land doesn't have to go to the town. The town doesn't have to be involved at all. And so the select board has an opportunity to exercise an authority about access of the snowmobile trail because the town is accepting ownership of the land. If the developer were, you know, going to uh leave it in ownership of the homeowners association or to keep ownership of it himself, the town, the select board wouldn't have that same authority. So what we're also doing is having um the town's attorney review what could be done uh through the zoning ordinance to give the, the planning board the authority or to require developers, uh, you know, res- for these residential subdivisions uh to include certain recreational activities um that maybe are already existing or otherwise. So that authority doesn't exist now. We know that. We're confident about that. We're exploring if it, if there's a way to give the planning board that authority. It's not clear if that's possible yet or not. The select board does have authority this time because we're taking ownership of the open space and we'll talk about that once we get the open space plan proposal from the developer.
Could that be used for trails also?
There is a, yes. Yep, it's.
Not just the snowmobile trails, but to coincide with towns.
Walking trails, yes.
And there is also.
I understand. I hope so.
And there is a separate walking trail as well.
Is there?
Uh, uh, that goes from the road to Malago Brook.
Right.
I think we owe this for, you know, those commercial guys in the town, um, that pay the taxes that don't take from us. You know, it's uh, we're, we're airplanes, firearms and uh recreation power sports. That, that, that's what we got in this town, so. All I got to say.
Okay. Mr. Gibson, or anything else?
Uh, planning board is not meeting um the rest of this month. We usually have a work session, but we're, uh, just because of the election coming up, we want to see the status of those more of the zoning uh ordinances before we have any further discussion.
Mr. Gibson? Yeah, I don't have too much to add. I had, uh, I was at a board meeting out of town last week, so I was not at the conservation meeting. Um, this Thursday, the energy committee meeting is canceled so that people can attend the candidate forum.
Discussion.
So summer camp uh registrations open up tomorrow. And before and after school registration is March, March eleventh at ten AM.
I have, I have nothing.
Talking about school board, liberty of session, transfer station, met, couldn't make too many decisions. But it's interesting, the comments on the increase in the bag prices. That the majority of the responses to increasing the bag was, it's about time.
Yeah.
Not the, it, what we waited for. And uh ABC was doing that. Anything else? All right. Second public session. Public comment. Mr. Chair.
Uh, Daniel, I have three thirty-four, I'll go and try by. I was at the uh planning board meeting and I spoke up. He, he might have improvised, improvised on this corner. There's twenty-five foot drainage system that's going through this into there, and that's where the trail is going. So there's a deed in right away for drainage. So it's all laid out and that goes with the land. And then any future board wants to try to do it, objection war could, could be brought up. A cycle could, could, could be ruled. So I think this is the best situation because you have a deed is right away. That's where they designate it. So it's pretty clear where.
But that only goes so far, right?
But it goes into the, then it goes into all the open space. But they can follow that right down there. And then, so that is, so you have something on paper that's more viable. And if you want to deal with homo association, you'll end up losing it probably in the future. They're going to have to do a complaint. One person complains. And I think it's a, this is the perfect opportunity because it's a deed is right away for drainage. And that's where they designated the trail, so.
I'm actually, I'm pretty sure that is a part of the lot. It's not a right away. That's part of the actual parcel. It's twenty-five feet, touches out to.
Right, it's part, but part of the order space.
But it's part of the lot. It's not an easement across those private property owners.
It's part of the lot. No, I know, but that, it's, it's spelled out. That is part of, it goes into the open space. It's all on the map. So when the drainage goes through there, the towns are going to go in there and go and do maintenance for the drainage. So there is a designated area. It's right there on paper. And that's the best situation, I think. Yeah, I don't think you're going to lose it. So it's also spelled out simple to me. Thank you.
All right. On public, um, make that motion.
Motion to go in on public personnel reasons.
Wait, I'm sorry. Anyone online? Oops, uh, or either raise your hand, your teeth or bar six?
Uh, seeing virtually Mr. Chair?
All right, okay. That closes the public comments, second public comment section, session now.
Take a motion going into the public uh discussion personnel.
Second. Mr. Scott, all favor. All pros.
Thank you.
We've made that motion, so.
Second. Why is it not?
There we go.
Okay, you're back.
Oh, welcome back to the public session of the 13th of, uh, yeah, 13th February Select Board meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second.
Without objection.
Yeah. Mr. Gergen, your mark.